Okay.
Is everyone ready?
All right, good evening. At 7:00, we'll go ahead and call this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance.
Please rise. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Wallace?
I am.
Commissioner Dennis?
Here. Commissioner McLeod?
Here.
Chair Waddy?
Here.
Thank you. We're on to item number three. Any ex parte communications for the commission?
No.
Nope.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four. Item four is our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted on by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the commission, and there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the commission or the audience requests to remove these from the consent calendar. First up, we have item 4-1, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes from March 27. Item 4-2, we have two sets of minutes here, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes from April 10 as well. Item 4-3, permit application 19-002, this is a design review for a new sign at Target at 1057 East Shore Highway. Item 4-4, permit application 19-025, design review for a two-level addition at 817 Carmel Avenue. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak on any of these items? This is your opportunity for comment.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
817 Carmel. Why don't you wait a minute. We'll pull it from the consent calendar and then we'll hear that item. Okay, great.
Does anyone, then that is item 4-4. Does anyone else want to pull or have discussion about items 4-1, 2, or 3?
Nope, not me.
Seeing none?
All right, I'll move approval of consent calendar, items 4-1, 4-2, and 4-3, being the minutes from March 27, the minutes from April 10, and the design review for the new Target sign.
I'll second.
Great. Take a roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Seeing none? Those items are passed, and for the Target sign, just a reminder, there's a 14-day appeal period to the city council. We'll then move to here, item 4-4, the two-level addition for 817 Carmel. Before we open it up to the public comment, did you guys want to do a presentation, or should we just jump to the questions?
I think we should probably give you just a brief overview of the project's scope.
Yeah, okay. So we'll go through our normal procedure and then...
Just a second.
Yeah.
Just for a second, we'll do a presentation and then we'll call you back up.
Okay. We will.
Good evening, everyone. We'll just do a quick little summary of this project. This is PA 19025, design review for a two-level addition at 817 Carmel. The applicant is seeking design review approval for a two-level addition at 817 Carmel Avenue. The subject site is a 5,000-square-foot lot with a two-bedroom, two-bathroom, 1,875-square-foot home built in 1929. The project's scope includes a two-level, 489-square-foot addition at the rear of the home. The addition is proposed to accommodate an expansion to the existing sunroom located on the first floor, two additional bedrooms, and one bathroom on the second floor. The exterior of the addition is proposed to be clad in cement, plaster, and wood siding with gable roof forms to match the existing home. The existing Spanish Revival style of the home is proposed to remain. This would result in a four-bedroom, three-bathroom, 2,358-square-foot home with a maximum height of 24 feet 11 inches. Parking is provided in the existing garages and driveway.
Great, thank you. All right, you can come on up now and...
Let me begin by introducing myself. My name is Ling Wright, and my husband Fritz and I live at 815 Carmel. And we've been in our present home for about 40 years. And since we've been there for so long, we've acquired certain expectations that are important to us, and one of them is our privacy. So that's why we're requesting that our new neighbors, Brandon and Yvonne, to replace the two large windows for stationary glass block windows. Their windows are on their north side, facing our south side of the building. Okay, the reason why is our buildings are so close together, there's only 10 feet between us. So our windows are in direct alignment, so if we could look into each other's windows. And so that's one of my main complaints. And if they have their windows open, we could probably hear their conversations at night. So we're very, very concerned about that because of our sleep. So I leave my windows open practically all year round. So if they were to open, close their windows, like through our sleep hours, I'd wake up because we're like sleepers. So our loss of privacy and deprivation of our sleep would be a real hardship for us, and that might affect our health and time. So I'm a little concerned about that. Okay, so thanks for letting me explain, and hopefully you'll grant our request. Thank you.
Is the project applicant here who'd like to come up and respond?
Hello, how do you do? My name is Javier Ruiz. I'm a representative of The Architect, Gunkel Architecture. I was the project manager on this. So if the question is essentially about the privacy from these windows, none of the windows in question, the two on the upper story, are required to be a certain size for egress from the bedrooms for code reasons. We could certainly look into reducing them slightly, but it wouldn't really make much of a difference in terms of the overall privacy concern. But it is on, it is at the required setback. They are low-activity areas in that they're bedrooms. And they're basically being matched on the other side, so they're not proposing anything that's not already an existing pattern in most houses in the neighborhood that have bedroom windows on the side setbacks. That would be my take.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Given that you're, and you must know the site, given that you're adding on the end at the back of the house, do you know if, for a fact that, you know, where the adjoining houses are located with respect to this addition, are they, are they, is, are they right beside it, or is the neighboring houses a little bit farther forward on their lots? If you understand what I mean.
Can we go to the survey sheet on there?
Survey, and it looks to be.
Or the, I think, I think there might be another sheet that shows it a little better, too.
There is.
It'd be towards the, towards the front, or actually, that one's the best one.
Survey, yeah.
So if you, if you look at the three-dimensional view, you scroll down just a little bit, can see the exist, the adjacent house, why am I pointing at this?
You can point on the screen behind you.
Yeah. So the adjacent house has a, has a two-story portion right here.
Okay.
And then we'd be adding the two-story portion back here.
Yeah.
So they're slightly offset from each other, but not, not much.
But not much, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, public comments closed.
Okay.
We're back to the commission.
Okay. I guess I can make some comments on it. Yeah, I think that it's a very attractive design for the overall project. I appreciate the comments from the neighbor about their concerns for privacy. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go for glass block windows being put in. And in fact, I have to say, this is something that all of us in Albany deal with. My next-door neighbor is 10 feet away as well, and our upstairs bedroom looks down into their bathroom. And I mean, the thing you do is you kind of work it out with your neighbor's blinds, that's what blinds are for. And/or we can also require slightly translucent glass that can't be seen through for the lower part of a window. We've done that in the past. I'm partial to approving the project as it's designed, I think. I'm inclined to that. And ask the owners of the new addition to be sensitive to neighbors and put in blinds. There are so many types of blinds these days, the kinds that can be, come down from the top so that you won't have a line of sight looking into the neighbor's, neighbor's windows. And I think that's sort of the way it is in Albany. There's so many, almost all the homes are 10 feet apart. So many, hundreds, thousands of units are 10 feet apart. And it's so common. Yeah, yeah. I don't know. Those are my comments on it. Otherwise, I think the project is fine. It's a, it's a nice addition. I like that it's keeping, it's congruent with the style of the existing home. It's a unique kind of building. I've never, I think it's a McGregor, but I've never seen a McGregor with that design. And I like that you're respecting, respecting the vernacular, the finishes, the detailing with that, and I think it's a good second-story addition. So, okay?
I concur with all of that. You know, living in a house where I think we're actually something like six feet away from our neighbor because both houses are not conforming with the setbacks, I do think it's something we live with here. And I don't think, although I am sensitive to the concerns, I don't think we have a basis to deny a project that complies with setbacks and other development standards just because the neighboring house built first, essentially. So I agree, it's an attractive design, and I would also encourage the applicant to consider measures to, you know, respect the neighbor's privacy and perhaps even look at doing some kind of, you know, more opaque window treatment. But I, I don't feel that, you know, I'm not compelled to suggest that we require that just because the project does comply with our standards.
I guess I'll just chime in that I don't have anything else to add. I think you guys have kind of said my piece as well. Commissioner McLeod?
Yeah, I agree with my colleague's comments. I mean, privacy comes up almost every meeting or because of this closeness to the houses. I mean, it's typical of living in any city that's kind of dense like this. My opinion is that, you know, windows should be allowed if they're within the setbacks, within the building envelope. I think it's fine. Light and air is, you know, something they should enjoy. The irony is that you're asking them to do something that you already enjoy. You're asking them to give up something that you already enjoy, which is, you know, a clear window that opens looking out. So I'm fine with the project. I think it's well-designed. It looks like a nice addition and looks like it's coherent as it's presented, and I would support it.
Do we have a motion?
Could I make one more comment? When I, when we, when I read the file, I saw there were a lot of comments on the drainage issues, a lot of documentation on that. I think it was probably on the consent calendar, and staff probably put it on the consent calendar knowing that one of the standard conditions of approval would take care of that. And that is that the city engineer is going to have to approve the revised new drainage plan for this project, and you'll have to conform with that. And our, my assumption is that will take care of that historic problem, and I certainly hope that's true. And so I just want to make that comment. That's how it's covered.
With that, I would move to approve item 4-4, which is Planning Application 19025, Design Review for 817 Carmel.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none? None opposed? The project is approved. And this project did have story polls, yes? So make sure to sponsor, leave the story polls up through the duration of the 14-day appeal period. And that item is now approved. We will now move on to item number five. This is public, general public comment for persons desiring to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You can have three minutes. Is there anyone here to speak on an item that's not otherwise on the agenda?
Nope.
Seeing none, we will close public comments. With that, we will move on to item six, action, possible action items. So first up is item 6-1, Permit Application 19-014, Design Review and Conditional Use for a Two-Level Addition at 1146 Evelyn.
Yes, good evening. Once again, commission, this project, Planning Application 19014 is before you tonight. Some background on the property, on the subject property. The subject property is a 6,445-square-foot lot with a two-bedroom, one bathroom, 1,566-square-foot house built in 1950. City records show minor repair work done to the home in the past. This project was last seen by the Planning and Zoning Commission at the March 13, 2019 hearing. At that hearing, there were concerns with the project regarding the proposed encroachment into the required creek setback area, the overall project architectural design, the practicality of the proposed green roof, the proposed skylight projection, the fenestration pattern, and the lack of topographic survey with respect to the creek. Here's a street view of the property as it sits today. And then I did a quick site visit today, so here are quick photos I was able to get from the street front. You'll see the second parking pad on the left. This is just a shot over the fence towards the creek area. You'll notice a lot of vegetation, so it's kind of hard to see what's going on there from the street front at least. And then just alternative views of the property, subject property, and then on the right, the adjacent property to the north and that setback area. And with that, the applicant, project applicant is seeking design review approval and conditional use approval, design review for the two-level addition to the main dwelling, and a conditional use permit to extend existing non-conforming walls. Should the project be approved, this would result in a five-bedroom, three-bathroom, 2,375-square-foot home with a maximum height of 27 feet 6 inches. Here's an existing elevation of the home. Here's what was previously proposed at the last P&amp;Z hearing. And then here's the refined street front elevation before you tonight. And then additionally, a 3D render of the home from the street front, and then a 3D render of the creek side of the proposed home. Project refinement, the project architect has modified the home design based on feedback received at the March 13 hearing. These refinements include an overall reduction of FAR by 171 square feet, a reduction of 114 square feet specifically with the proposed ADU, relocation of the east wall to be compliant with the front yard setback requirements, reduced wall lengths throughout the project design to comply with the creek setback requirements, inclusion of a topographic survey, a reduced height in the skylight projection. And with all that, the first floor is proposed to accommodate a 502-square-foot addition and remodel, which would include the kitchen, dining room, living room, guest room, bathroom, laundry room, and the existing garage. The second floor would gain 106 square feet and to the existing second story of the home and would accommodate four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The ADU is proposed to be 536 square feet and is proposed to be located on the second story of the home. Keep in mind that the second unit is exempt from commission review per state law. And then with, in summary, this would result in a floor error increase from 24.3% to 42, 45.2%. And with that, the projects which exceed a .45 FAR are subject to exceptional design review as reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Exceptional design treatments include the contrasting exterior cladding materials, the new garage door and entry doors, atrium, the atrium in the dining area, a green roof, covered porch, solar panels, and a cantilevered second story. Conditional use permit. A conditional use permit is required to vertically extend the existing north wall and a portion of the east wall located 3.9 feet from the property line according to the site survey. The architect is proposed to build directly on top of these walls to accommodate the second-story expansion and remodel to the home. Oops, excuse me. Additionally, at the previous, the previous project proposal included encroachment into the required creek setback area, and such encroachments require conditional use permit. However, based on the applicant's additional research and findings on creek bank definitions in conjunction with the topographic survey which was obtained by the property owners, the proposed southern walls have been set back to comply with creek setback requirements. Based on this, the only walls requiring the CUP now are the north wall and a portion of the east wall. Section 2024030, Overlay Districts of the Albany Municipal Code, the water course overlay district regulations date back to at least 1978 where they existed with the same language contained within the code. The Albany Creek Restoration Report also dates back to this time. Staff is not able to locate a copy of this document as mentioned at the last hearing. The project is required to comply with FEMA requirements for flood zones. In other similar projects, the city requires a similar of a flood elevation certificate prepared and stamped by a licensed civil engineer. And then just within that code, under the water course overlay portion, there is a portion of it that states that new construction or substantial improvement of structures located in a flood-prone area shall follow regulations contained in the section, in section 2052 of the Albany Municipal Code. And then if you jump over to that section, oh, actually, first of all, here's a, the firm map from FEMA indicating the flood zone of the subject area. So you just type in the subject property, and that's what comes up. It's in Zone AO. And then with that in mind, if you jump into section 2052060A3A1, residential construction new or substantial improvement shall have the lowest floor, including basement. And then for properties located in the AO zone, such floors should be elevated above the highest adjacent grade to a height exceeding a depth number specified in feet on the firm by at least one foot or elevated at minimum of three feet above the highest adjacent grade if no depth number is specified. Therefore, should this project, project proposal move forward, a special condition of approval would be placed to ensure compliance with this code section. Just for additional context, here's the APN map showing the subject property and the creek. And then the, this is the refined proposed site plan. And then you'll see, note the setback requirements in this blue line. It may be a little hard to see on the projector, but it's right there. And then additionally, a topographic section with context to the creek. Parking. There are a total of two off-street parking spaces provided on the subject property. One space is located in the existing attached garage, and one space is located in the existing open parking pad. No additional off-street parking spaces are triggered with this project's scope. Subject, the subject property is 0.2 miles from a bus stop on Gilman in Santa Fe. Therefore, no additional off-street parking is required for the ADU, and that's the state law. Staff has received one correspondence concerning the placement of the proposed accessory dwelling unit entry door on the north side of the property. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA and recommendation. The staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review the proposed project and provide feedback to the applicant and staff. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from commissioners for staff?
I have a couple. So, let's see. Can we talk about the, the non-conforming walls? So the first page of the staff report indicates that there would be a CUP required to vertically extend the existing non-conforming northeast and south walls, but then "south" doesn't appear elsewhere in the staff report. So I assume that that was just a stray, that there's, that the south, the reference to "south" is not accurate, or?
Correct. I think part of it is also discussing the, the project applicant's supplemental information and where that creek setback is, as it may not be 100% clear to the commission, possibly. So that is just taken into account, the "south" wall, should it be nominally encroaching into the setback, worst case scenario.
I see, okay. And then on the north and east, the vertical extension, so could you go to the, I think you had a figure showing the setback, non-conform, there we go. Well, yeah, it's kind of hard to tell. I just, I wasn't sure where the issue is on the east wall. Is it just like a tiny?
It's, it's technically just because that corner where it meets the north wall is 3.9 feet from the, from the property line. So technically, that requires a conditional use permit.
I see, I see. Okay. Got it. Okay, yeah, I just wasn't totally clear from, I can see the north wall, you know, over that setback line, but I wasn't sure about the other one. So what, so in terms of the creek setback issue, going to that section of the code that you pointed out, which I believe was 2052?
Correct.
I was just curious, in practical terms, what that means here in terms of, like, how much, would they have to adjust the grade of the, the home to comply with this? And if so, how much?
Yeah, so the code section states that it should be placed one additional foot above the depth specified on the firm map. And then if you look at the firm map, I don't know if you can see it, maybe a little hard, but it says two feet there.
Two feet of flooding.
So one additional, that would be three.
Max three.
Three above grade?
Yeah. And the minimum is three also.
Or three if it's not specified.
The whole thing would have to go up three feet.
And the existing house is not at that level, right? So they would have to, like, jack the whole thing up? But...
I believe so.
I'm just trying to understand what this looks like.
I think that's the correct interpretation.
FEMA will allow parking in, in the flood zone. And I don't know what's on the bottom of that, of the, I know, it looks to me like the living quarters are upstairs. If there's living quarters downstairs, then they'd have to be elevated. But it has to be, it'd have to be engineered by, by someone who knows what they're doing and makes sure that it's done in a way that FEMA will, will, will say it complies and you don't have to buy flood insurance. Yeah.
And maybe the applicant can speak to that issue as well. But just one more question for staff, which is, I was curious, so I believe when this was presented to us before, I didn't go back and look at the prior agenda item, but I believe when it was presented before, it was presented as we would need to grant discretionary approval for the encroachment into the creek setback. And that's currently not, I know they made some changes to the project layout, and that's not currently how it's being presented. So I just wanted to confirm in staff's view, based on the additional information that the applicant has provided and the changes to the site plan, in your view, does this project conform to the creek setbacks? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no problem. I think what makes this a little hard for staff to answer is because our code has no specificity on where, what the top of natural creek bank is. I mean, given base, given the supplemental information and that the fact that the project has been refined to be further restricted and contained, it would say it's, it complies. With that in mind, the code does allow the Planning and Zoning Commission discretion to allow such encroachments. That's...
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a few questions. But I guess going back to this standard, could you tell us again what the firm or the number... the number, the depth number is? That's?
Yeah, so the depth number indicated on the firm map under, in the FEMA's website for this area is two feet.
Two feet?
Yeah.
So how does that?
Yeah, right here.
Play out in terms of?
So, our code states that you take this number indicated on the, on the, on the firm map under FEMA and then add one additional foot to that, or elevate it at least three feet above the highest adjacent grade if no depth is specified. But there is, I mean, it's the same difference essentially.
So that means they have to be three feet above grade, which is basically the level pad. I mean, the architect seems to disagree, but I'd be happy to hear his point in a few minutes, but I'm just trying to get some other questions asked. And I, I mean, I just struggle a little bit with the parking. Because if you go to the site plan.
Oh, site plan.
One of the parking spaces is not entirely on the property, and I don't quite understand how that's a legal space. You know, I'm trying to throw a big roadblock here, but it just, I'm trying to, you know, come up with some logical, consistent way of looking at these things.
Yeah, so we, there are several properties in town, both on the north end where we share a border with El Cerrito, and then on the south end where we share a border with Berkeley, where some of the houses do, are not 100% contained within Albany's jurisdiction. There are these portions that are technically in another, their jurisdiction. However, the, the building envelope, the permitting process, the property taxes all get paid to the city of Albany. So from that perspective, even though there may be a modest encroachment, for all intents and purposes, it's still contained within the city's jurisdiction.
Just a follow-up on that, though, the parking space that's shown on A2.1, though, is not the required off-street parking, or is it? Because they have one covered in the garage, off-street parking, and the ADU does not require one. So they've satisfied their requirement, so that's just sort of superfluous parking that's shown?
Right.
So they only are required to have one space in the garage? Is that?
Well, they're required to have two off-street spaces. However, they allocate that, be it covered or uncovered, is at their discretion. So they're using the garage as one of, you know, as the covered space and then the driveway pad as an uncovered space.
Okay. And that's not in the front yard setback?
I mean.
I'm only, I'm asking only because we see a lot of requests to waive or reduce parking exceptions, or parking requirements, when it's not possible to provide it outside front setback, so.
Yeah, correct. In looking at this, as far as how staff recognizes it, it was an existing parking space that was utilized and it was available on-site. Many times we recognize existing non-conforming parking spaces and, in also conjunction with covered parking spaces as far as them not meeting the minimum dimensions, but when they're, if you want to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, we, we're treating this review tonight as a study session, so we don't actually have all the formal entitlement requests. So we can have the applicant amend their application so that we make the findings for the front yard parking exception, because I believe dimensionally it satisfies the, the code requirements.
Okay, yeah, I guess if this, if we are gonna see this again, just getting some clarity around the parking and how it's proposed to be satisfied and what we need to make findings about, if anything, would be great.
And, I mean, I was just curious, who owns that other piece of property there, that little triangle? And, I mean, could they block that off at some point? Or, I mean, is it some sort of common law easement? Or is that like City of Berkeley right of way?
Isn't the, the red line is the city limit line, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, the red line represents the city limit line.
It's probably.
It may be Berkeley Public.
Berkeley Public Right Of Way, probably.
Okay.
In which case, if Berkeley were ever to modify the sidewalk or do any sort of expansion, that parking pad would go away. But then the space in front of the garage could also technically count as a second off-street parking space because it's contained entirely within the, the subject site.
Yeah.
I guess the other question I have, more of a general question, but, and I raised this a little bit, Christopher, earlier, was when, when is a remodel, when does a remodel become new construction if almost the whole thing, the whole existing building is taken down? And my understanding was that they're allowed to rebuild, given the non-conforming site plan, the survey, so, so, just to run it through, they could demolish the entire structure, take out all the foundation and rebuild on the, given the existing non-conforming walls? Is that my?
No, if they were gonna completely scrape the site and build brand new from the ground up, they would have to conform to the current development standards. There wouldn't be the ability to take advantage of existing non-conforming conditions.
So how much has to remain to be a remodel addition? I mean, in Berkeley, it's very clear, they have a percentage of how much structure has to remain. I don't, I'm just trying to find out.
Yeah. We've had this happen where well-intentioned applicants come in, they have a similar project request, they get in there, find that the rot and framing is in such bad, poor condition that they can't preserve. We had one situation on Portland about nine years ago where that was the case. They ultimately kept one of the walls and that was the way in which they were able to maintain the building envelope. So we're not as strict as Berkeley. We've let it go down to as little as one wall remaining in place. But if it were to be a situation where there's nothing worth salvaging and the site needs to be scraped, then it becomes brand-new construction.
My only other question or thoughts were about the, where the setback top of bank line begins and whether it's literally top of bank or a hinge point. I'm somewhat comfortable with the hinge point definition, partly because of the lack of specificity in our, our regulations. But I just wanted to just check with you, if you're comfortable with where they've drawn the line, then, you know, that would be helpful for me.
Yeah, I think given kind of our lack of specificity in the code, I think we're, we're okay with this interpretation.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
I had just one other quick question. One of the pieces of correspondence in our packets was, expressed some concerns about the entrance to the new accessory dwelling unit that's being built that's gonna be along the north property wall. I know that the accessory dwelling unit is not within our purview and we're not allowed to critique that, just sort of for the benefit of everyone here tonight. To what degree does that include, you know, exterior alterations that are directly associated with that ADU? So for example, that door is going to access the ADU, do we have authority to modify or disapprove the location of that door?
I, I think you do have discretion with respect to that because you are looking at this as a design review request, so you do have purview over the exterior treatment. So if there was a more optimal location for the door, that's something that you could condition or require the applicant to modify.
So it's just the square footage and the sort of density that we can't be modifying?
Right.
Great. Any other questions?
No questions right now.
With that, is the project applicant here? Would you like to come up and present or respond to any questions?
So, Christopher pretty much presented the architectural component fairly clearly, so I probably want, since my, I have a limited time, I probably want to explain the situation of the creek, because that probably seemed to raise the most question relatively to establishment of the creek bank, the FEMA maps and all the other things that are influencing the, the design of the building on that elevation, on that side. So, you know, we did quite a bit of research in terms of case studies as to how we finally came down to the location of what that setback number is. You may allow me to read a little bit of what we actually did. So, since there's not a published definition of the top of natural creek bank for the city of Albany, nor were they able to find any national state definition, we were able to find three published definitions from other cities and state jurisdictions for which verbally and graphically define the top of the bank as a distinct change in slope of the creek channel. So, to go on, we used one from the city of San Luis Obispo, the watershed management plan, and we used one Vermont Agency of Natural Resources, and the city of Santa Barbara Coastal Land Use Plan from the coastal commission on the diagram below. I don't have, I don't suppose I have some of those diagrams on, 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 on the projection, right? How, for instance, the, how the?
Are you talking about the supplemental?
Yeah, supplemental information.
Yeah, if you'd just give us one moment.
Yeah.
And then there's quite a bit of pages, so.
Yeah, so there's some appendices, but the first few pages sort of summarizes what
Okay, I think it's finished loading.
Okay, yeah. So, so in other words, when the 100-year flood surface elevation is actually believed the top elevation of gray, then the determination at the bank centers around the first hinge point of the embankment, meaning when the natural concrete contour changing from one kind of interval to another kind of interval. If the 100-year flood surface elevation is above that gray, then the top of the bank is really the top of the embankment in that case. In the case of the Coronese Creek, right? I'm just going to read what FEMA flood zone A2 specify. Our site is located in FEMA flood zone A0, the zone designation of which states, quote unquote, rivers or stream flood hazard areas, an area with a 1% or greater chance of shallow flooding each year, usually in the form of sheet flow with an average depth ranging from one to three feet. Data collection of the Coronese Creek itself, which is the subject creek in question on our site confirms the water level approximately two feet in depth. You can therefore apply the upper diagram definition of the top of the bank from the city of Santa Barbara Coastal Land Use, where they find the top of the bank at the first distinct hinge about the 100-year FEMA flood surface elevation. So, so that's, that's how we arrived to why that first point, 102 on the survey map, it is the first, is the hinge point from which we then take the setback to it. That also, looking at the other side, which is Berkeley, puts it pretty much in line along what the chapter 17 in the Berkeley Water Management setbacks are, in pretty much similar setbacks that they have on the other side of the same creek. The, the other issue that came up here, which is the elevation of the flood zone or, based upon the grade of the, of the site, really has to do with the location of that creek, because you look at the creek as it descend down to the bay, there isn't kind of an even gray. So you couldn't, FEMA couldn't establish therefore that it needs to be two or three feet above gray, right? You know, that would, that would just not make any sense. So, so if the bank determines what is gray then, then two or three feet above that elevation, which is in, in, consistent with what they have in terms of the measured depth of the, of, of water rising, which is about two feet, will make sense then to have that, that the level of the, of the construction needs to be three feet about that particular elevation. So in the case of our bank being 102, the elevation would then be 105. So our grade is actually a 113 where the building is, you know, 113. The toe, if, the toe of the creek at this point is about 98, given the survey that we just did that. So we, we're in fact 15 feet above what is toe now, at, at the elevation of the water level now. So you add another two feet in worst case scenario, according to the FEMA map, and then three feet to that, so you're adding five feet on top of the 98, which puts us in 103, which is still 10 feet below what our grade is. So, that's our interpretation based upon all the studies and the reading of all the, all the, all the maps and, and descriptions that we have had from, from coastal commission and, and sort of this insurance map provided by FEMA. So, you know, if you have any other question regarding the architecture, you know, we, other than the points that Christopher had mentioned, reducing the scale of the skylight, you know, compacting the building, and basically making all of the wall conforming except for that portion of the north wall that belonged to the existing building, which we're actually not even increasing in height much, or changing the profile of the top of the parapet to comply to the new roof, is the only non-conforming condition that we have. In fact, the, this east portion of it, right, is now conforming at 15 feet, 14.86, just a fraction of an inch is in there, so that's conforming to 15 feet. I'm not sure if you could interpret that one foot that is encroaching on the north to also mean non-compliant to the east, because that is also within 15 feet of the east side, unless of course one looks at it as a bend that moves across the side. So, any other clarification, I'll be glad to answer.
I had two quick questions.
Yes.
First, the window materials on the front weren't specified anywhere. Do you know what they are at this point?
So we have cement plaster for the building, you know, metal trim around the windows and between the windows. Around here, kind of a depth, kind of a thin profile and kind of a depth trim around the windows, a wooden panel, garage door with lights, wooden screens, and then on the inside portion of the building of this elevation, and also as it wraps around to the north, to the south face, we have, we have horizontal siding, you know, either as, depending on.
I was actually, what's the window sash material on the front facade?
Aluminum.
Aluminum?
Aluminum. You know, given, given today's performance requirements, they're probably most likely to be a little bit thick. Thermally insulated aluminum sash.
And what's the reveal that you're, you're proposing on the rendering? It looks quite deep, but?
So it's a, we've done that in another project, so it's a very thin and deep profile, roughly about two, two by, two by three inches deep, so that you see actually a thin profile around the, around the windows, yes.
And then just two other questions for you. On the rendering supplemental that was included in the packet, it looks like there's a large sort of vertically oriented window on the right side of the window, but it's not shown on the actual drawings?
So there were two designs. One was the previous one that had this very tall vertical window on the stair.
Sorry, I missed that note. Okay, I see that now.
We have shifted, I mean, we shifted that to the north elevation, so they still provide a good amount of light to the vertical shaft, yes.
Great, thanks, I was.
The front elevation does no, no longer has that window.
And then just my final question for you, in terms of the ADU.
Yes.
Is the intent, is the owner's intent on this ADU to be sort of a separate rental unit? Or are they, is there sort of programmatic intent here for it to be, you know, in-laws, that sort of thing, where it's maybe a little more integrated into their family?
As far as I'm concerned, rental unit, but, you know, we have the owner here to answer the question too, so I.
And not, not that it matters or we're, we're sticking to it, but when we're looking at design considerations.
Given the cost of living in these areas and, and even the cost of construction, I think a second income is, is almost essential nowadays.
Thank you.
I, I was curious about the, the issue that came up in the letter we received about the access to the ADU. Could you address whether that's, whether moving the access point is something that you think would be feasible here?
Well.
I know that, I mean, looking at your design, it doesn't look like, it looks like it would require a pretty substantial redesign to accommodate moving the entrance point, but I'm just, I'm curious what your thoughts are and if that's something that?
Well, our, our thought is that, you know, the, the access at that side of the building, which tend to be dark and unkept and, you know, almost like a leftover space where a lot of, which is, it is now, will really benefit for something that actually has utility to it. You know, as a doors and entry will have, will have to obligatorily provide illumination to that area, you have to be kept, you have to be maintained, and there will be traffic. So, you know, that will feel that contributes to safety of that area, contribute to the upkeep of that area, and also doesn't create ambiguity to. upkeep of that area, and also doesn't create ambiguity to, you know, where is the entry to the building altogether, because I think the building as it exists now has a big staircase in the front that leads up to the second floor, which since it's only one unit in there, at some point we consider keeping that, but then that will create a very kind of funny situation when the main entrance of the house is actually to the left of it, and then you have this grand staircase leading to ADU. So in order to de-emphasize the entry to the smaller unit, we sort of put it on the side to it. It also works better in terms of how the circulation and the stair works from that point of view, and not opening the door to the street facade. I mean, if there is a concern for privacy perhaps, or other things, you know, we'll gladly look into that, but I think, you know, after considering all these different options, we feel that that is actually a benefit to the side.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Not right now, not right now.
Thank you. We'll now open it up for comment. Do we have any speaker cards?
I don't have any speaker cards, but I'm gathering that we do have some, a few speakers who would like to address the commission, so we'll give you your three minutes, and if you could fill out a card and hand it in, so we have accurate names for the meeting minutes, that'd be helpful. Speaking first is fine.
So I heard a lot of answers about the setback, that it does conform. Previously, I thought it was 15 feet, and it was supposed to be 20, so I haven't heard that exactly addressed. Is it 20 now, setback from the creek? And I thought it was about the middle of the creek. I live on the south side of this house.
Yeah.
The setback requirement is still the same at 20 feet.
And what is the, what is the current plan, then?
It seems that the applicant is proposing to comply with that setback requirement of 20 feet.
Okay. I could not follow the additional square footage math, arithmetic, starting with 1566, and then adding 502 and 106. None of the, nothing adds up, as far as I can see. Can you explain that?
I can. It is a little dense, because we do allow deductions for both the staircase and the garage spaces. Additionally, the ADU square footage is not encapsulated in the total square footage for the home, because the ADU is not subject to design review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so it has been omitted from that portion. But the, I can walk through the table if you would like.
So the short answer is that the total counted is 2,911 square feet. That's what we recognize with deducting out the garage and the stairs.
So, well, okay, I don't want to use up my, all my time, but I just see 502 and 106, and when you add that to 1566, you get 2174, but yet the house is 2375. And I just, let me get to something that more affects my comfort where I live, which is the part that's going to jut out towards the south. I'm concerned that the privacy, because I have a deck there, and it's a little imposing. And is there a plan to put a fence up?
Doesn't look like it, based on the plan set.
Nope.
Can I request that?
No, no fences are shown on the plans.
Right, right. There used to be a fence, and my neighbor asked when he replaced, because there was a fallen tree, and I said, "Fine," but it was all open space. So now that there's going to be a building, can we get a fence? Can we get a fence? Can I ask for a fence?
I think you made the comment that you would like to have a fence, so...
Yeah, especially the part that's, that juts out.
Don't leave yet, we need your name for the meeting minutes. If you could just announce your name into the microphone.
Louise Snitz.
Louise Snitz, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I still don't understand how the total adds up. If someone wants to answer that writing somehow, because it doesn't add up.
Do we have any other speakers?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take it. Okay, our next speaker is William Smith.
So I'm sorry for my bad proofreading. Any reference to the south side in the written statement should be north, north side of the 46. I didn't, I didn't know during the time that the architect was up here whether I could raise my hand, but I couldn't understand a word he said in his answer to the side door question. Could somebody, could you guys summarize his response to you? Because it's essentially a response to our letter.
I mean, he briefly, you can shake your head if you disagree with what I'm saying, but briefly, he said that, you know, the area right now is fairly unkempt. Part of the design would require adding lighting, making that side more accessible, and so saw that as a general improvement overall. And with respect to moving the door to the front side of the house, he made the point that, you know, architecturally, that would create confusion about where the main door to the house is, because in fact, the main door is around the side, so that was the gist of it.
You mean, the main door to the rental unit would be, is around the side? The main door, I guess, is in front, so...
Yeah, the main door to the main house is currently around, you know, is off to the side. And so his point was that adding a door to the accessory dwelling...
Oh, you mean off to the side, at front? Okay, yeah. Yeah, I understand that. I, we're mainly concerned with, I have to dispute the unkemptness. It's like vegetation, and there are plants and trees there. I wouldn't call them unkempt. We have a gardener that comes there regularly, but I, I understand that, I think he made some, said something about safety. I heard that. I was wondering if you, if you could repeat what he said about that, because I couldn't understand him.
I think he made the point that I heard was that there would be lighting added, because it would be traversed by people.
Of course.
Currently, it would, it would be...
Okay.
Does it mean that there would be more activity back there? It would be less of a dead space, less of a dead gap, more activity back there of people coming and going.
All right, okay.
You know, more of...
That's one way to look at it, I guess.
More lively and, rather than...
So I'm, we mainly want to maintain, we just don't want the access to be compromised further with regards to just generally bringing stuff into our backyard. And so I know you can't address the possibility of a fence going up there going forward, but that was a concern of ours, it's in our notes, but I mainly just want to make sure that it's, it doesn't compromise fire safety or, and general access going, you know, we have to bring, it's very narrow. You know, you addressed already how Albany, we're cramped in there, and I want to make sure it doesn't get more cramped, and just, I guess, just put in a consideration going forward that nothing happens to make it, make it like that, say, like a fence going up and, or something like that, narrowing it. And aside from that, oh, I also, I looked, I couldn't see the markings for where it was surveyed to determine the property line. And so I, I guess it's kind of reflected on there with the 3.9 setback, it probably represents that, but the visual in, at our house...
Oh, you're asking, where are the, where did the surveyor put it?
Yeah, yeah, I didn't...
I don't know.
I didn't quite, we looked, we didn't see that, really.
I don't know. The survey is a good, is a valuable piece of information for you, and they may or may not have left stakes out there, probably didn't, or they might be just little nails, very discreet. So you're better off, I think, looking at the survey and measuring from the existing corner of a building, or from a tree.
Okay.
Surveyed all of that in, and they've done, I, you can assume they've done a careful job of that.
Okay.
So it's a real important piece of information. But you can be sure that the, and she's looking at the survey right now, so there's 3.9 feet between the house and your property line, and it looks like, then there's a concrete path, and that you probably have, looks to me like, less than 3 feet from your property line to your house, right?
Yeah.
Narrow, yeah, yeah. And so you're concerned about a fence within, like a tall fence on their property?
Yeah, like, yeah.
Which would really narrow your access way. Yeah. I appreciate that.
Yeah, although actually logically, with my concern about fire safety, obviously, maybe they wouldn't put a fence in because it would inhibit that, so probably shouldn't worry as much. But I just wanted to put a word in for that and add it to what we have on the record about that, about the access in that area.
And I think the architect hears that. I don't think we can prohibit a fence, you know, but...
Just to put that in the air.
That's it. I hear, I see your point, I definitely see your concern, yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Because there's only, what, 4, probably less than 8 feet there, less than 8 feet, yeah.
Do we have any other speakers? Any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Great, all right. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Back to the commission.
Okay, all right. See, where can I, so I guess I can, I guess I can start. I think I want to say this is one of the more complicated and difficult projects I've seen in a long, long time, and part of it is, a lot of it is lack of information and what looks to me to be not very good information as well. So my focus personally is on the hydrology. I've dealt with hydrology as an EIR preparer in the past. I've taken a hydrology class at Cal, which is only one class, and doesn't really qualify me for much of anything. My son is a geomorphologist, so, and he works for Balance Hydrologics, which is the company that provided all the climate data in here, in the applicant's report. And, and, and I know the creek some, and I think there's, there's real issues here. I think that this project reveals the inadequacy of Albany's creek, creek, creek policies, creek plan, if you call it that, creek development requirements, creekside development requirements. I'm very suspicious of the FEMA, of the firm map there. 2 feet of flooding, and it doesn't even follow the creek bank, and it is, it is outside of the creek channel. I've asked my son and other ex, a couple of other experts at his company about it, and they just say, "Well, you know, it does look really strange," and it is not, it's kind of, if you had a 100-year flood here on this creek, they say, one of them said, "Well, it'd be kind of like Houston." And the determining factors are likely to be the storm drains and the development pattern, rather than where the creek channel is. And so maybe this firm map is accurate, and the real 100-year flood may pop out of the channel by a loony greenway and come right through people's homes, down away from the creek channel, while the creek channel's full. Every time you have a culvert under the street like that, you can see the culvert will only carry a little bit of water, and if you have a huge amount of water, it's just going to, those, the streets are going to act like dams, and it's going to go over the top. So their advice is, the advice I have is, and my own experience on it is, in a way, you should take the firm map for, for the, as accurate, you just have to assume it's there, because you can, you can change it, but you have to do thousands of dollars worth of engineering work that you may or may not result in a, in a different, have a different result. It's a complicated modeling process that would, that would take a lot. So FEMA does have ways to do a map revision. It hasn't been done on this creek, at least not in this area. No one else has taken a second look at the hydrology that led to the FEMA map. The fact is, the FEMA map says you are in the floodplain, and that you're going to have 2 feet of water in a 100-year flood. What that means to you is that you will have to meet FEMA requirements, which include doing a survey for a certain point on the building in order to qualify for mandatory FEMA insurance, flood insurance, which will cost you thousands of dollars every year, probably a minimum of $3,000, and you have to do that every single year. The way around that is to floodproof the building, and I would say you must do that to FEMA standards. And you, that will require some, an engineer to work with, who has some FEMA experience, I think, to, who knows those regulations, to figure out what your base point is, and then you'll have to go 3 feet above that for all of your living spaces. And I think that our zoning code is going to require you to do that. It isn't automatic that local governments have to require that, but I think our zoning code does require you to do that. And so, so what that says to me is, from a design review standpoint, this project is going to have to be redesigned. It's going to be 3 feet higher, which may have, you can, you're okay within the height limit, but it may change the design. You may want to, may want to make changes to design when you need to have your living spaces 3 feet higher. And/or working with the engineer who can bring you into compliance and get you floodproofed may, may lead to changes that you want to make. Is the parking, can the garage be on the existing elevation? Do you want to have it higher? Do you want to raise it higher? Those are decisions you have to make. So I, I think it's, it's a real dilemma for the applicant, and I think it's bad news, and it entails additional planning, and I don't, I think that the design review, the design is going to have to change, because the building's going to have to go up, and doing that may make you want to really think about what's going to happen. As far as other issues are concerned, I looked through your calculations for how to comply. I appreciate your efforts and all the research you did to try to figure out what Albany's top of natural creek bench, top of natural creek bank means. You did a lot of work on that. I don't agree with your, with your, some of your assumptions about that. I think the Santa Barbara map, not the lower part, but the upper part, would, would qualify here, because you are in, you're in the floodplain, and the FEMA, the FEMA level is above, above the elevation of your site here. That being said, I'm comfortable with you, with using Berkeley's rule of 30 feet from the center line of the creek. I think that's something that is easy to measure, and you comply with that, and you showed us that you comply with that. And I really don't even know how to, I wouldn't know how to calculate Albany's 20-foot requirement, because I wouldn't know where 0 is, where to start. I doubt if it's elevation 102. I think that, I think that, that those benches there, typically when a creek is in, is channeled, but not necessarily in urban areas, the first bench is equivalent to a common flow, say, of 2-year storm, or 3- or 4-year storm. The second bench is equivalent to a less common storm, maybe a 10-year storm, and then the top of the bank is, is what it is, and in this case, the 100-year storm is, according to FEMA, 2 feet above the top of the bank. So I, I don't know what the natural, the top of the natural bank is, and I don't think anyone could define that. I don't think that any hydrologist or geomorphologist would know how to make that work, and/or they would just go, and you're at, you're at elevation 113, they'd say, "Well, we, we need to go to wherever elevation 115 is and measure 20 feet from there," which would be 2 doors or 2 houses away from you, probably. So that doesn't, that doesn't work. That would, that would make, that might make this entire parcel undeveloped, and we can't do that, we don't want to do that, we're not going to do that. So... And we can't do that. We don't want to do that. We're not going to do that. So I think the driving force here is hydrology, and I'm really sorry that Albany doesn't have a better creek plan, and it just hasn't been a priority. And I don't know when that'll happen. There's only, there aren't that many homes in Albany that are affected by this creek, maybe 50. I'm looking at the firm map and the aerial maps. I'd say about 50. It is something we should do, and we do need a better plan. And Berkeley's ordinance is a good one, and it's been tested hundreds of times. And I think that, I'm quite comfortable with the 30-feet setback from the center line of the creek, and I think you're good with that. So other thoughts I have, design review, I hear everything you're saying about that. I still think, I think that the front of the building is a little bit empty in the design you have. And it'll be a very contemporary look, and it might be okay, but it does have some empty space in there. And I did look at your, I did have the thought of maybe having a door in the front there. And I looked at your floor plan and everything, and I see how it would be difficult to do. And I understand your arguments about why you would want to have the entry to the ADU on the north side, and kind of have a shared passageway with the next-door neighbor. And I hope that's your intention, and you want that to work. And that might work, and might work well. The rest of the design on the south side, the creekside, the main part of your whole living area, I like. I like. I don't have any significant comments about it, and I think it would make a very attractive space. So what else is there? Let me see here. No. Oh, and the parking in the front, I'm comfortable leaving the existing historic parking space there, even though it does appear like a bit of it goes through the Berkeley city line, a bit of it, the back half of the back, third of it is in Berkeley. I'm comfortable with doing that, and I think that would work out okay. So, all right. So those are my comments.
I could go. Yeah, first of all, you know, I'd like to thank the applicant for listening at the previous meeting and making some pretty major adjustments. You know, I definitely like the north wall better, and I appreciate lowering the skylight or making it back a little bit. I think it could still be lowered a little bit, and you could still have the same result on the interior and have even a little bit less of a visual impact on the neighbors. The front, you know, I think it works better. I think there's, overall, a more coherent window pattern, especially in the front. I mean, there is some blank space there, but I get the idea of recessing the front door a little bit further back on the left there. And I do understand the argument about not putting the other secondary door to the ADU on the front. Definitely, you'd have all your guests for the main house knocking on that door first, or potentially. Whether there would be some way to just put it right around the corner and reverse the stairway, that would be kind of problematic, maybe in terms of where it enters the unit above and how it would potentially impact the garage if you had to turn, go up and turn left or something. But it might be doable with a little creativity in the floor plan of the ADU. The other issues, the, again, I'm fine with the parking. It's just kind of more for my curiosity. Have we got a parking spot in two cities?
I'll just say this anecdotally. We actually have a house where the living room is in two cities.
Okay.
And it's actually not in Albany. The owner came here attempting to pull a permit, and she was told to go to Berkeley.
Depending on which place the crime occurs, you call a different police department or something. But anyway, and the creekside design, I'm fine with that. I think it's kind of a sheltered space looking out at the creek. The big issue about the creek setback, I'm actually fine with where it's defined. It's a little, it seems a little bit arbitrary there also, but even if it was set further back up the bank, I think the new construction is still, even if you went 10 feet closer to the house with that line, I think your new construction would be outside of that area. And given the lack of specificity in our regulation, I'm inclined to be a little more flexible on that issue. The FEMA issue is a little bit beyond my experience or any kind of expertise I have. The only time I've dealt with something like that was in the city of Palo Alto, where they have about half the town on slabs on grade as iclers, and they're all below the floodplain. And to remodel them, you had to lift them up three, two, three feet, which became a problem in some neighborhoods. So it may be a similar situation here, although it kind of boggles my mind that the flood would come up that high from that little creek, but it may be based on obstructions or, I don't know. I don't know what to recommend about that, except perhaps you have to hire a civil engineer to determine what the actual FEMA requirements are. And worst-case scenario would be potentially building it up, not a slab on grade, but a raised-floor construction with the vulnerable parts three feet above grade. But that's a little bit, you know, I can't really judge that. And I don't know how to resolve that other than to suggest it would have to be a civil engineer that would come up with that plan.
That's right.
Who could determine the actual, I mean, could really, with specificity, determine the height above the floodplain. Otherwise, you know...
Can we stay on that topic just for a sec?
Sure.
If you're...
I'm just about done. I don't...
Because I wanted to ask some questions about it.
Yeah. I could finish up in a minute or two. I mean, the only other thought I had was about the green roof. I'm not going to oppose that, but I don't really see, I sort of don't get that idea in that you're never going to see it. It may be difficult to maintain. As a conceptual idea, maybe it's something you want to do, but it's only going to be visible from somebody flying over the house, so I don't know if that's something that is ever going to be apparent in your design. You know, after, you know, the first six months, everybody's going to forget about it. So really, that's all I have to say. Otherwise, I'm pleased with the changes you've made. And the only other request would be to maintain shared space with your neighbor, but, you know, that would be voluntary, I think. But I think, you seem like all nice people. You should be able to work it out, so. That's it.
Just on the FEMA and, you know, staying above the floodplain issue, I guess, I was curious first if that provision has been applied to any other, like, creekside homes in a way that has required them to be raised up.
So we've had two residential projects, one at 1134 Stanage and one at 1146 Stanage, where that has been required. And though not a single-family house, the Belmont Village did have to increase the height to meet that elevation compliance. So we do have precedent for that.
I'm always amazed that you remember the house numbers from all these previous projects.
Agreed.
It's astounding. But so for the Stanage, for those two Stanage projects that you mentioned, were those new builds or remodels?
They were remodels. And actually, I'd like to talk with the architect maybe tomorrow. One thing to kind of help move this project along, I'd actually be inclined to have him or have some sort of engagement with the project engineer for the 1134 Stanage project. It's Verdant Structural Engineers, and that was one that, there was a lot of work that went into it in terms of, like, the civil engineering, the elevation certificate preparation, that kind of thing. But that house was very solidly constructed. And that may be beneficial here, since they have experience with that, to kind of have them look at what's being proposed, given the creek's sighting and the building footprint, to get some additional feedback.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, I think, you know, you're getting that this is beyond the technical expertise of anyone who's sitting up here. Well, I assume it's beyond yours, too.
It's beyond yours.
And I, you know, I think, personally, I think it's, you know, it's important that we apply our code and apply it consistently and that we, you know, make sure that we're addressing flood safety issues. I also want to make sure we're not just overzealously, like, reactively requiring structural changes that could, you know, be so expensive that they could, you know, make the applicant walk away from their project theoretically. And so I guess, you know, if it's possible to get some additional technical input on this, either from the applicant's side or from, potentially from the city engineering department, and potentially from the city attorney's office in terms of advising on how this does or doesn't apply here before our next meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be wise. Just to your point, we actually don't have this kind of expertise even in-house. We've worked with Willsey Hamm as a consulting engineer in the past, and they have a staff engineer who is available to us who can look at this, applying kind of the FEMA and the firm regulations and make a judgment call. So I'd be happy to forward what we have to them for further review and commission review.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think our interest is, you know, making sure that we're being fair and consistent and upholding safety and also, you know. But if the applicant seems to think that this doesn't prevent them from designing the building they want, and so I just want to have a better understanding of whether there's...
Yeah, and I think for us to accept that, we would need some documentation from a licensed PE confirming that.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Did you want to say something on this issue?
Oh, I had one thing I wanted to add from something that Ian said.
Okay, cool. Okay. So I guess just to run through my other comments. So thank you to the applicant for making the changes that you've made to the footprint. I do think that helps address a lot of the concerns that came up the last time this was before us. And, you know, in particular, dealing with that pesky front setback issue on the, I guess, the southeast corner of the building where there were potentially other non-conforming walls. I appreciate you getting rid of that, that issue for us. In terms of, and I think the overall design actually looks nicer with some of the slightly scaling down some of the features. In terms of the north non-conforming wall, I am fine with extending that vertically. I think it's, you know, it's within the range of the kind of, you know, thing that we often are asked to approve in Albany. And I think good neighbor policies or good neighbor, you know, interests of the owners will help ensure that the access remains open for both houses. You know, you may, I'll just address you, sir, you may want to consider approaching your neighbors about actually writing up some kind of shared access easement. If you want to actually lock down your, I mean, not to give you advice, but I think that is a potential way you could address concerns about being able to use that indefinitely. And beyond that, I do think that general fire code standards should ensure that there's sufficient access around the side of the house. In terms of the creek setback, I think, you know, you both covered a lot of the issues. It's really complex. And again, in the absence of any defined standards, I think that the approach proposed by the applicant is certainly plausible, even if it's not the only conclusion we could reach. I think just eyeballing the way that this, even with the addition, would be set on the site relative to the creek, there are a lot of properties along that creek that are significantly closer, including the one immediately to the south. It looks like it is actually on top of the creek. And I don't think what you're proposing, I know, this is really just more of a general policy or fairness-type issue rather than an environmental position. But, you know, I don't think it's out of step with what others have done building along the creek. And I think it is, I think there's enough evidence for us to make the conclusion that that's consistent with our ordinances and our requirements. Doug, I like your idea about just using, you know, 30 feet from the center line. I don't think we can ad hoc change what our standards are, but I do think that here, it's perhaps, you know, the fact that 20 feet from the top of bank versus 30 feet from the center line, they seem to be analogous in practice, and that's something that I could get comfortable with. So I think that's all I had to say. I do, I like the design overall. I think the project looks nice and not particularly concerned about privacy on the south side when you have, you know, a 20-plus-foot setback from neighbors who have apparently no setback from their property line. And there is vegetation and trees and a natural space from the creek in between the two, so.
Well, I just have a...
Can I add one thing? Ian mentioned Palo Alto, which made me think of San Francisco Guido Creek, which made me think of a subdivision in Menlo Park I'm aware of that doesn't, that is in the floodplain and didn't, the homes there aren't elevated, but they had instead, and it was in uni, I think it's unique, they had masonry walls around each lot. It probably wouldn't work here, but, and then they would have flashboards that would go in the front gate if a flood came, and the owner would be responsible for that. So what I want to say there is that having to raise the building is not a mandatory thing that FEMA has. That's another reason why you need to sort of talk to an engineer with some FEMA experience who knows what the options are for conforming to FEMA regulations and for getting that certificate of exemption. That's what you'll need to do. There are other options besides just a mandatory height increase.
Well, I just had a few additional comments. I won't sort of belabor the points. I very much agree with my commissioner's previous statements about the setback and sort of the Berkeley standard and the analogous feeling to what it currently is. So I would be comfortable with the design relative to the setback from the creek as it is. I think the FEMA issue just needs to be figured out. I don't feel like I really have the knowledge to be opining on the direction on where to go with that. The other, only other few comments I have are really more design-related. I'll again compliment the architect for making the changes that have been made so far. I just have a couple really small, small refining comments that I would ask to sort of percolate on in advance of the next hearing. As it relates to the entrance for the ADU, I don't know if this would be a better solution, but I think it would be worthwhile maybe exploring it. I know a lot of, seen a lot of buildings that are sort of hold this type of sort of two-story contemporary look where they've recessed the garage door three and a half feet and have sort of the traditional, you know, oftentimes the tradesman or a secondary door sort of tucked in perpendicular to the front facade and reversing the staircase. I do think there's absolutely flexibility on the second floor plan to adjust for that. It's an entirely new gutted top floor. I think you can make the floor plan work. So again, you know, I don't know if that would be too deep of a recess of a garage door and would throw the proportions off, but I think it would be something to look into. And I think that would solve some of the problems of both not being on the side but also not feeling like the primary entrance. I think you would still hold the primary entrance to the main unit as the focal point for folks coming to the house. I definitely think the design that holds that two-story wall at the primary entrance is much stronger than where it was previously cantilevered. And so I think that was a great change. And then my only other comment is just on the revised plans. If you could include a window section, because I do think there's a simplicity, sort of a nice simplicity to the design of the facade that you've revised here. And I do think it's a little bit of a play on what the existing architecture is, but in an improved manner, I don't think we can expect that you completely change the architectural style. You're kind of working off of what's there a little bit and improving on it. So I would just say, I think on this, the devil... So I would just say, I think on this, the devil's in the details of the materials. Sort of the execution of the application of, you know, the stucco, the reveal depth and the quality of the windows. I assume you were saying they're thermal-broken aluminum windows. Aluminum windows have a huge spectrum of quality. They can run from really crummy-looking aluminum windows to really, really beautiful contemporary windows. So I would just say, you know, there is an exceptional design standard here, so we would want to see something on sort of the upper end in terms of quality. But other than that, I compliment you on the revised design. I think just playing with the idea of relocating the door within either a recess of the front garage or elsewhere. And that's kind of why I asked the question of how the unit's going to be used, if it was more of for, anticipated for family. I think there could be other solutions, but I think if it is a discreet, separate unit, you do want it kind of separated from the primary. So that really encapsulates all of my thoughts on this. I think overall, you know, there is an existing building on this site. I think we need to remember that. And the delta in terms of what's getting closer to the creek is actually a relatively small amount of the building. Most of the building is going directly back. So to me, that's really where the focus should be, is sort of what's the net new expansion towards the creek. And I'm comfortable with the reductions that have been proposed and where that volume sits vis-à-vis the creek boundaries. So that's all of my thoughts at this point. Anything else?
All right.
I guess a motion to continue is-
No, you didn't even have to make a motion.
Don't have to make a motion?
No, future review will require a new public hearing notice.
Okay.
Well, is it clear for the applicant what we're looking for, or it's basically addressing the FEMA issue?
Yeah, I think with respect to the FEMA issue, there's some coordination we need to have with the applicant and also our external consultant who specializes in this type of thing. And we need to provide you a level of analysis at a future review that really addresses those issues, because we do not have that kind of knowledge, so.
And then the rest of the issues are mostly suggestions, but, you know, something to think about, mostly in terms of the stairway and the entrance to the ADU. Maybe if the stairway could be reversed in the front entrance to that, placed either inside a recess or, as I suggested, maybe just around the corner instead of further back. But, you know, in a way, I'm still okay with it being further back on the lot. I mean, otherwise, I'm pretty good with this project. You know, if it weren't for the FEMA issue, I would support it. So I don't know what else-
Why don't we try to have those issues resolved before the next hearing? But it sounds like the design, we're generally comfortable with the place where the design has evolved with a couple little-
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any other questions from the applicant? I mean, I-
Do you want to stand there?
Yeah, you know, just maybe a response to what we've been saying. You know, in fairness, I want to move this project forward, so.
Agree. You know, I think, you know, we've invested a huge amount of time, effort, and expense to get not only a topographic survey with all the details, but also a case study of what that, and I'm not making any of this stuff up in terms of determining what the potential location that bank and the FEMA map implies in terms of elevations into that. I mean, even a little bit of common sense, if you assume that Albany will flood up to level 115 above sea level, you mean, we'll have a coastline right across the entire bay because as a profile of the city sort of goes to the bank, you know, it's, everything is lower than 113 from that point. There is also, in addition to that, a fairly, not scientific perhaps, but a fairly comprehensive study of the Coronelissus Creek that was done by Berkeley in their water management thing that actually located the potential flooding zone, most of them, as you mentioned, in the Holone Park, there on the flood area. And in fact, another one on the upper shadow area when there is a little bit of a flat area on where the creek originated. I mean, it traces the location of the creek from, in emergence, on the upper, on the hill down to when it charges up on the bay. So I feel personally that beyond that amount of work that we have invested in looking at all the potential case study, we will not find any new determination in the next hearing or in the next 10 hearings, unless, of course, the burden can be put onto the city to determine that for us, which I think it should have been from the very beginning in the similar fashion that Berkeley provides that guideline, you know, you can be at 30 feet or you can be at 20 feet with a conditional use permit, and if you're within a culvert, you can be five or you can be 15. But they're very clearly delineated. They might not necessarily reflect any fully investigated scientific study, but definitely something that they have used to consistently apply to all the projects that are actually aligned along the creek. Now, if every case study along this creek on Albany were to have to subject to these kinds of studies, not only, everybody will probably have a slightly different interpretation of what this thing is until the city obviously determines what those numbers are that applies equally to everyone.
I think we should, oh, I was gonna say, I think we should probably have that conversation taken offline with staff. I don't think anyone up here is going to be making a decision on that tonight, and I really do think that's something that we need to be advised of in advance of the next hearing. So I'd suggest, I mean, I think we all hear your concerns, and thank you for putting in the extra effort, but I think at this point, it's probably most useful for those conversations we had offline.
I agree.
And I just want to clarify that I think, you know, we all appreciate the work that you did on helping to define what's an appropriate standard for the setback. And I think everyone sitting up here is, you know, reasonably comfortable with proceeding on that basis. So I don't think we need to keep revisiting the issue about the setback. I think we can accept that and move on. What we're dealing with is, I mean, we heard tonight for the first time that there's a requirement in our city's code about, you know, using certain elevations above, you know, the FEMA floodlines, and we don't have information available to us in the, we just, we do not have enough information to be able to conclude that this project complies with that standard. And so that's the specific thing. And I, we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna keep having a dialogue about it right now, but I just, I wanted to clarify that that's the particular issue that I, and I know it's unfortunate that, you know, this is requiring a third meeting to talk about, but we do, we need to be able to understand that to make a finding about it.
Obviously, not in my power to suggest this thing, but I would think that that can be made into a conditional approval that then can be resolved at the staff level without having to have a public hearing.
Because this was also agendized as a study session, so we can't take action tonight.
The one thing that we want to be clear on is that if we do reach out to our consulting engineer and the design can proceed as-is, that's going to prevent any future redesigns. If you were to proceed and we find out from our consulting engineer that in fact this project has to be redesigned, you'd be going through this process again. That's really what we want to avoid. We want to make sure that we get it right when this comes back for a final review.
So I think with that, we're going to move on to the next item here. So we're going to close that study session item, and we will see it again. Great. Moving on, we're now on to item seven, new business. Item seven dash one is proposed amendments to chapter 20 dash 32 for signs.
Yes. So this is the first in what will be a series of study sessions to revisit the city's sign ordinance, which currently dates back to 1978 and has not been amended since 1978. A lot has changed since then, so for a variety of reasons, it's really appropriate for us to modernize our signage requirements within the city's municipal code. So as part of your review this evening, you do have to take the step of adopting a resolution of intention to initiate the amendment efforts. Just to reiterate, this will not be your first, your last time looking at this. We anticipate coming back to you with future recommendations for refinement. And so for your purposes this evening, we've been pretty focused in the feedback that we're looking for. Just to give you some background, within our Albany 2035 general plan, we do have a land use policy specifically related to signage being treated as an integral part of building design and an opportunity to enhance the visual character of the city. As a result of that, we also have an action item to update the sign ordinance with appropriate revisions and specifically with the elimination of billboards along the city's thoroughfares. And most recently, the council included this as part of their strategic plan with respect to an objective of maintaining an attractive atmosphere in the business district. One thing way beyond Albany's control, but nonetheless pertinent to the discussion and amendment of this ordinance, there was a Supreme Court case in 2015. It's a case of Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona, and you have the Supreme Court ruling in your packet. This determination concluded that local jurisdictions may not create different regulations for signage based on content. So in rewriting this, we have to have a high degree of neutrality. We are still able to regulate, you know, materials, size, placement, that type of thing, but we can't get into the particulars of what the content of that sign may say. So we also have, as part of that, we have to provide provisions for onsite and offsite signage, as well as commercial and non-commercial distinctions. And in doing so, we have to apply objective standards by zoning district. So in your initial draft tonight, I've tackled the first kind of six standard things, purpose, general regulations, evaluation standards, definitions, provisions related to election, non-commercial signage, and message neutrality. We've included in your packet Fremont's ordinance, based on the direction of our city attorney, and we've kind of largely pulled from that current sort of definitions and practices and standards for our ordinance. And their ordinance was updated, I believe, in 2016, so it's post-Supreme Court and addresses a lot of the content issues. And so in doing so, we wanted to kind of give you some snapshots of signage within the city. We showed this visual to our economic development committee. One of the things that they have worked on in terms of sort of promoting good cohesive design in the business district is sort of the broad discouragement of awnings. And so we used Niza La Bella, which is now the location of Juanita and Maude's, is kind of a pretty dramatic before and after. The previous restaurant had this massive awning, which partly covered up the brick facade. When Juanita and Maude's assumed this space, they repainted, they removed that awning, they did much more modest signage, and then light fixtures to really kind of enhance the architectural appearance of the building. And similarly, Subaru across the street had that blue awning, I think, since the early 80s, and they have obviously gone through a pretty dramatic remodel. They've eliminated those awnings, they've done some facade work, and then also more standard signage that does not involve an awning. And this is one where previously there was a fascia sign along the building. This is the building where Foam Creations and Wild Car Brewery is located. That building ownership changed in 2017, and the new owners required that all of that fascia signage be removed, and the blade signs go in front of the businesses. And I happen to really like this, because previously you would walk on that side of the street and you would see no identifying markers for any of those businesses. You'd have to be on the north side of the street in order to know what's actually there. This allows a pedestrian to see it from both sides and see it immediately adjacent to the building. I think this type of signage also goes to really kind of enhancing the pedestrian character of Solano Avenue. In this particular case, it's also sited in a way so that it doesn't have conflict with street trees potentially growing into the area and creating any sort of conflict between the sign and the tree. This is another awning that was approved in 2017 and completed, and that's what it looks like today. Unfortunately, that awning and that business did not work out, and so now we have an awning that is covered in red paint, eliminating any of the previous identification markers. Of course, if a new business assumes a lease of this space, I think that awning is going to go away. So kind of thinking in the big picture, this was signage that was so specific, it's really not, you know, it's not going to contribute to any sort of adaptive reuse, and right now it looks not very attractive. And again, just looking at Solano Avenue up and down the street today, and this is another example where these businesses actually have inset signage below the awnings, where channel letters or some sort of other fascia signage could be installed. And instead, you have awnings that aren't very well-maintained, that, again, detract from this otherwise lovely brick facade. And unless you're walking by, you really don't have any identifying markers as to what the business name or, you know, function is. Same thing with Citibank. This is an awning that has not been kept up at all and is pretty dated. And then again, a couple more examples of this. So one of the things that I would be curious to get the commission's feedback about is in terms of signage for Solano Avenue specifically, is having it more in that pedestrian scale, the blade signs. I think they do a lot to enhance the pedestrian character and also are, it's kind of a less is more approach to identifying the businesses. And again, we have the blade signs at Crepe Suzette and the Spice Shop, and then at the building where Foam Creations is located. So for your review tonight, we're, I want to kind of not fatigue you on this particular topic, since it is fairly meaty, but I think kind of two key areas we're looking for is signage that would be allowed by zoning district. So that is something that we could do, where you could allow certain signage in San Pablo Commercial and not allow it in Solano, or, you know, you would have pylon signs in the commercial mixed-use, like the Target sign that was proved earlier tonight, kind of adding some specificity to that. And then also looking at the sign area. And that may be more than what we can handle tonight, but I think it's worth noting that our current ordinance allows, I believe it's two square, two feet per linear frontage on Solano, so it's a pretty generous amount of signage. If you have a 25-foot frontage, you could have up to 50 square feet of signage. That seems a bit excessive and not necessarily proportional to the building face. So that's just an example there. There's also a provision that we left in there that I'm kind of inclined to remove, but I would want to get the commission's blessing on that. There are provisions that were crafted in 1978 specific to Golden Gate Fields as a means of legalizing their signage. I'm not sure that we need to continue to have that in the code, particularly if the use may change over the next 20 years. It seems like if it applies only to one property, it's not, it's a bit of overkill to have provisions specific to that, to that site. And so in terms of what this looks like in the draft ordinance, we've just called out the zoning districts, and we can add some specificity in terms of like dimensional area, that kind of thing. And then also looking at what signage would be permitted by what zoning, which specific zoning district. So we can, we can talk through that. And again, this is the first in a series of discussions we'll have, so if we, if we only scratch the surface tonight, that's fine. Again, I recognize it's a pretty involved topic. We did receive one item of correspondence, which was forwarded to you, and that related to the treatment of murals as signage. And in one of your attachments, there was a presentation from the National APA Conference regarding signage. We learned that there is case law that effectively prevents murals from being treated as signage, and so they are not subject to sign ordinance regulations. We've not included any provisions within the draft that would recognize murals as signage. That is something that would continue to be reviewed through the Arts Committee as The project, or the amendments are exempt from CEQA. With that, we do have the resolution of intention. We can, depending on the commission's energy at this late hour, we can just do kind of a cursory review, we can do a deep dive. I'm flexible on this. As I said, we'll be back having this discussion again.
With that, this gentleman here for public comment?
This gentleman submitted the email, so I'm-
Peter, can I ask a question of staff? Can I ask a question of staff first? In the staff report, right at the beginning here, now on page two, it says references to directional signage and political signage have been eliminated from this draft.
Right.
They have, but there's still some in there that I saw.
So you can't have, you can't call out political signs specifically, because that gets to an issue of content. So it's non-commercial signage, and the directional signage is directly related to the Supreme Court decision, because what it was was offsite signage providing directions to a church. And so that's where we're limited in how we can, you know, how we can treat that.
Regulate that. So we, I see. Okay. So that, okay, so that is still an accurate sentence, then? That references to directional signage and political signs have been eliminated, even though the draft ordinance does have some discussion of directional signs in a couple spots.
Yeah, there's some review I want to have with the city-
Talk about, I- Talk about, like, is it election signs or something to that effect?
Non-commercial signage during election periods.
During election periods, okay.
Yeah. That's how we've maneuvered around that.
So that's the acronym for political?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Not acronym, wrong word, but okay, a substitute for political. Okay, thank you, I understand better now. Okay.
Why don't we open it for public comment, since there's one gentleman here?
My name is Peter Goodman, and I am on the Albany Arts Committee and have been for a number of years. And I just happened to catch notice that this was coming up, and I'm just kind of concerned about murals. I understand that murals are not a part of the ordinance and don't have to be. The Arts Committee has, for many years, felt that murals would be a great contribution to the vitality of the city's commercial districts, and were eager to work with, you know, commercial property owners to, you know, decorate their blank walls and make places more attractive. Looking at the ordinance, there is no reference to murals, and that is sort of a good thing. And my concern here is that where does a sign stop and a mural begin? And there's some ambiguity in my mind. And it's always occurred to me, you know, there's that space up on Santa Fe where Supercut used to be, and there's a great blank wall, and we've been looking at it for years, and it always occurred to me, it was, well, what if Supercut, they're not there anymore, but what if they were to put a big mural of someone giving a haircut? Didn't have the name Supercut, but it's sort of an advertisement for their business. It might be an attractive mural, but it might, someone might object to it because saying, well, it's basically an advertising, isn't it a kind of a sign? So I'm just kind of concerned that when you're, you know, crafting the final language of the ordinance, you take into account that murals may be there, and to allow for that, either by specifically excluding them and by trying to define what is a mural and what is not a mural, so that there's no ambiguity later on. I don't have the wordsmithing tools to help you with that, but it just struck me as something that you might consider adding as a, perhaps as a footnote or a note to the ordinance in some respect. That was my comment. Thank you.
Public, seeing no other public comment, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the commission. If not, I'll just kind of jump in. I had some thoughts on this sort of nerding out on the code stuff, since this is the kind of stuff I review all day during my day job. Just to respond to Mr. Goodman's comment about murals, we've actually dealt with this quite a bit in San Francisco. I think most recently, the SHN Theater, which is in our Civic Center, one of our Civic Center Historic District. And we came to this issue where huge blank wall, very, very prominent, SHN wanted to do something to activate it artistically. And to us, the issue was, you know, color and branding are signs. So if there's a very distinctive color that's part of a logo that's clearly associated with sort of the company, a specific company on the, where they either are offsite and it's general advertising, or for the business that's located in the building, that would be considered a sign, or if there was actual words. But other than that, it's not a sign. So if it is people getting their haircut in a very creative artistic way on the side of a haircut facility, but there's no specific color branding, and there's no language that's specific to that business or any other business, I think that's the important distinction. We also are dealing with a very similar one with, I think it's a hydrogen fuel station, that's one of the first in San Francisco, and they've got a big concrete wall, and they want to paint a mural on it, and they want to paint some cool using hydrogen, not gas kind of thing relating to cars. And our issue was, take the Shell logo off, take the yellow coloring off. But the cartoony-looking cars and, you know, power plants that are going with that sort of thing is free speech, and it's art, and it's something we wanted to encourage. So I think, to your point, though, it may be worthwhile to try to put some words around that in terms of, you know, things that are exempt from the signed ordinance as part of the preamble. I don't think there would be any harm in that additional clarity. I'd say sort of starting, I've got some sort of 10,000-foot overview thoughts on it, and then some in-the-weeds thought. I do think it absolutely makes sense to be regulated sort of in the structure that you guys have set up by zoning district. I think each of our zoning districts should absolutely have very different sign standards. With Solano sort of being the more conservative, if you will, but sort of conservative, but also, in my opinion at least, more sort of pro pedestrian business in the same way that we're focusing some of the land use changes around Solano Avenue. I agree that I think the projecting signs, blade signs, are really critical. But I think what also goes with that, sort of in general, both for Solano and San Pablo, is signs should not be covering up character-defining features of a building. So I think in Solano particularly, we have a lot of buildings that have really nice transoms on our older historic storefronts, or, you know, lowercase h historic, sort of older 1930s or 40s era buildings that really have that charm. And I think signs should be placed in such a way that they're not covering up or obstructing or really sort of ruining those sort of charming features. And with that said, on Solano, I think also illumination is really important. I think there's, it's actually, and not to call out any individual businesses, but on Lower Solano, I think a really great example is Souvenir Coffee is next door to an insurance company, Allstate or something.
Farmers.
The Farmers Insurance. And I think just the building typology is very similar, but the signs are dramatically different. And when you look at those, they really jump out. You know, one is directly illuminated, sort of a vinyl box covering a transom. And the other one is sort of this projecting, non-illuminating, more at a pedestrian-oriented scale below the transom, and there's just really a night and day difference to that. So I think in terms of placement, you know, no taller than, you know, below a transom level, so it's not, you know, higher on multi-story buildings is critical. And then having really, you know, either requiring indirect illumination on Solano or, you know, worst case, as sort of a halo-lit type scenario, which is sort of a much softer, less kind of bold in your face. I think San Pablo and Cleveland and waterfront is a bit different. It is more sort of vehicularly oriented, people are moving at a higher speed, and so I do think they're different, you know, maybe slightly larger, and the illumination could be different. But I do still think, you know, we want to be sensitive to any businesses on Solano that Juanita and Maud, I think is a great example of sort of character-defining features and not covering those up. On, I think, in my opinion at least, the only places where I think we should be having monument signs is sort of the waterfront in Cleveland. I think those are areas where it would be appropriate. And I think, given the target one we looked at, I think after some of those renderings, it looked like 50 feet on, that was the Cleveland zoning district, right?
East Shore.
Sure. You know, seems like an appropriate height vis-à-vis visibility from the freeway, but I think it would be worthwhile to maybe get a little bit of studies. You know, tall monument signs, I think we don't want to be impulsive of just pulling a number out of our hat. I think it would be helpful to sort of mock up on some of the parcels that we have, what the appropriate height feels like in those areas. But I think those are the sort of geographies where monument signs make sense. I think they should not be allowed on San Pablo or Solano Avenue. I also think it's worth considering, and I haven't sort of percolated entirely on this, but again, particularly on Solano, or at least maybe with storefronts of a particular size, a smaller, fine grain, of limiting the quantity. I mean, I know there is an overall size, it looks like ratio that you're looking at of sort of a proportion of frontage relative to signage size, but it may be worthwhile looking at overall quantity of signs, so people don't have a window sign and a projecting sign and a wall sign and roof sign, that sort of thing. Because I do think there's sort of a visual clutter at a certain point, especially on small storefronts. I think I'll call it there. I'll, I might come back with, I had a couple little sort of nuanced questions within it. Oh, there were some discussions about abandoned signs, and I wasn't sure if there was a definition of what is abandonment, what constitutes abandonment. I don't know if that's elsewhere in the code already.
We have some existing provisions within Chapter 2032, but I have to say, in terms of enforcement and code enforcement, it's really not, it's not really resources that we don't have. And so I think we could probably craft something in there, but we also want to be pragmatic about the application of it.
I mean, I think it would make sense to say something along the lines of, you know, if a, you know, business is no longer in business, the sign needs to be removed within a certain period of time.
Or a condition of approval, kind of, yeah.
Exactly. You know, if it's a ministerial permit, that's part of it.
Yeah, I think like in that State Farm example, that that sign's been decrepit like that since last November, and here we are almost six months later, so.
Yeah.
And then there's a, there was one section here, primary building face in the definition. I think we should, there should be some discussion about corner lots that have separate and distinct commercial spaces. You know, we don't have a ton of them, but I think we could. And I think certainly if there's a primary building entrance on both sides, you still would want some, each of those businesses.
Corner lots?
Corner lots, that they could each have their own similar type of pedestrian-oriented sign, for example. Let's see. Oh, one comment I had is I didn't see where roof signs were addressed. It didn't seem to show up in the prohibited or allowed bucket, but then they were further defined.
And that was actually something I wanted to get some feedback on, because it's, in the current code, it's really not clear. We have a definition, and then you have to go through this archaic table to find out that it's prohibited on Solano but allowed on San Pablo. And I kind of wonder, if we're talking about making broad changes, if it's worth, I think it's worth it to have it defined, but I don't know its practical application, depending on the zoning district.
I'm sorry, what kind of sign?
Oh, roof sign.
What?
A roof sign, a sign that's affixed to the roof of a structure. I mean, my gut would be no on Solano and San Pablo, and maybe have some flexibility on, just like the barbecue place had a roof sign, and it seemed like an appropriate sign that we approved in that situation. One other little thing, when we talked about commercial or identifying nameplates, it says limited to one square foot in area. I think we should maybe be clear per business, just in case you have a multiple-tenanted building, that seems appropriate thing to allow. And I think, I think that wraps it up for me, so, thanks.
I'll be quick, because I haven't honestly spent a lot of time with this so far, and I'm just trying to like percolate on the big concepts. I pretty much agree with everything Commissioner Awati just had to offer and appreciate those, the nuanced comments on a sign type, typology? I don't know what types. Just a couple of things that jumped out as I was kind of reading through this. One is that, so there is, I was confused about this conversation about removing political signage language, because I was like, I'm sure I saw that, there is a reference to political signs in here. So just, you might want to...
Oh, yeah. Okay, so I wasn't completely, okay.
This is, and I know, this sounds really nitpicky, I just...
No, 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 this is helpful, yeah.
Says no political sign shall exceed 16 square feet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I must have seen that too, that's, because that's why I was...
Generally speaking, I think what I would like, I was a little, I was intrigued by this table about authority for review, and again, I haven't spent a lot of time with this, and I'm not sure how this compares with what we have right now, but like generally speaking, I think that we should be trying to define, you know, objective standards about the size and lighting and location of signs, and other than, and if a sign complies with those things, then I don't really see a role for the Planning Commission, regardless of whether it's a freestanding sign or a marquee sign or a monument sign, as long as that sign type is allowed in that district. And so, so again, generally speaking, I would just prefer to focus on, you know, the standards for what signs look like in any particular district, and get rid of pretty much all of this review authority, with the possible exception of, you know, I think it's appropriate if, in the, or the rare occasion that we have a project that triggers a master sign program, I think that's something that's appropriate for us to look at. But otherwise, I'm just, it makes me nervous thinking that we would be reviewing all these other sign types if, because it's just not really clear what are...
And if I can just chime in on that, my understanding is that sign permits are required to be ministerial, meaning no SEQA, and so I do have some concern if we're reviewing it here in a discretionary capacity, how that sort of intersects with sort of, sort of a no SEQA, no design review capacity, or no ministerial, no SEQA capacity.
Yeah. What, yeah, that's, I mean, for my own clarity, you're thinking of SEQA as it pertains to the review of the ordinance or these particular requests if they were to come forward.
So if something's ministerial...
Yeah, to staff level.
Staff level, right? And so, yeah, I feel like if it comes to us, then it's discretionary.
I see what you're getting at, yeah, when it comes to P and Z, then it's subject to SEQA, whereas if it's a staff level, it's not.
And my understanding, at least with signs, is that part of some of the Supreme Court decisions is requiring sort of a ministerial review, but I'm not sure on the permitting side of it, but I know, I don't know, maybe you've got more...
That may be a question I'll have to run by our city attorney, just to get some clarity around that.
And I think, you know, there may be instances, we may, you may want to have an escape valve in the standards. So like you set a threshold for the maximum size, and perhaps, I'm not necessarily advocating this, but you might say, if you want to exceed this size, then you have to do a discretionary approval. But otherwise, I think that it's hard in discretionary review for signs to not get into the things that, you know, all of the Supreme Court precedent says you're not supposed to touch. And so I think that trying to, again, just trying to narrowly define, you know, what are the appropriate uses of discretion, and I think they're pretty limited, honestly. So again, I don't know if that's a very helpful comment, because I'm not giving any guidance on like how to craft that, but I think maybe it's something that will evolve through these conversations.
Yeah, no, that is helpful for us. I mean, the only two signs I can think of that have come here in the eight years I've been with the city would be the Target sign approved tonight, and then the master sign program for UC Village, and that's, otherwise, that's it. Everything else is reviewed at a staff level.
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate, where you're really just checking the boxes, like, does this conform? And then on the exempt signs, I was a little curious about the reference to banners being exempted. Maybe this is just a definitional issue, like maybe if the point is you can have a temporary sign, and banners are by definition temporary, that's okay. But I do worry that if you, if you just say, you don't have to have any approval for a banner, then people will be like, well, screw this sign permit business, I'm just going to put up banners, and those are ugly, and we don't...
Yeah, and then they stay there for years.
We can also put a time restriction on that of, you know, like a grand opening is 30 days or 45 days, something like that.
Right, yeah, so I think, again, maybe just, maybe that will come out in how we define things more, but we want to avoid unintended consequences of, you know, if you make some things harder than, and make other things easier, then things will trickle down. I think those are all of the comments I have for tonight, but thank you for, I did read the materials that you prepared and thought it was really helpful context, and I know that you've already put a lot of work into this, and it's going to be a big process because it is, it's very detailed.
Yeah, it's, yeah, and I know this is one of the larger packets that we've sent to you on a code revision, but this is, this is one that really gets into, you know, case law and federal requirements, so not as straightforward as side yard setback encroachments.
Yeah, right, right. Sure, I can, so yeah, when I first read, I had to ask my, the first thing I asked was like, well, what, what kind of things have I seen around town, and how will they be regulated here? Are they covered or are they not covered? And I was thinking of murals came to my mind, but a couple of others as well. What about the banners that are on the Giltrack fence over here, Forever and Ever? And I think they're really ugly. It looks like we would exempt banners.
University of California, not our jurisdiction.
It's UC, huh? It's UC, huh? Okay, okay. That's one way of doing it. The Albany Education Foundation sign, I think they put it on, you know, they have the, the thermometer rises as their fundraising goes up, it's there every, every year, most of the time.
It's the one in front of the Y?
I think they put it in front of the, in front of school district property, and which raises a question, you know, do we have jurisdiction, do they need permits over us there, and, or do we, or do we care? I, I don't know the answer.
It's, if it's school district property, it's that-
Think if it's school district property, it's DSA.
I think they do it that way, and so it doesn't, it doesn't, they get around our sign regulations that way, okay. Anyway, okay. Elizabeth brought up monument signs, and, and I, I thought immediately of the issue we had with the Shell Station over here, when they came in for remodeling permit. And I think that's a monument sign they have there, where they have the price of gas. They were really upset about it, because Arco has a tall sign, and they wanted a tall sign, or as taller, bigger and brighter, and we said no, and it was appealed, and I don't know if they sued the city or not on it, I don't know, but it certainly went to council. And our guidance there were the San Pablo Avenue Design Guidelines, so I think as you, let's review those and see what those, they're, that's a 1998 document, and one that we're going to update, I think, but, but still, for the San Pablo corridor, anyway, I think that would be a reference, a reference that, that I would, that I would use, as sort of historical starting point. And I was thinking of the fact that Solano's in both Albany and Berkeley, and I know, from my own professional work, I've worked with Ann Burns, who's a design review officer, whatever, I think, I don't know, design review planner, or whatever, in Berkeley. She's really good, she has really good taste, really good sense of design, and not, not necessarily easy to work with, and super busy and all of that, but I think it'd be great if you guys, some, try to contact her, maybe if you need to, I, I might be able to help, I don't know. I don't know if she'll return my call, because I don't have a job in her file, but, but I do like working with her, and she has strong opinions, and she has a real good, real good taste. And it'd be nice for, for you to find out how she does, she does all the signs, commercial signs, I think, in Berkeley, and all the ministerial, all the ministerial ones.
Review, okay.
All the ministerial ones. And, and I don't think she uses a sign and ordinance with, you know, with a checklist of things, but I'm not sure. I think it's more what she likes and how she feels. But it'd be, I think you should have a conversation with her, anyway, and, and let her know what we're doing, and, and maybe she'll come up with some good ideas, or maybe be able to borrow some things from Berkeley if they have some guidance, or, we should find out what they're thinking, anyway, I think. And then, let's see, can't even read my own, oh, yeah. I like, I think it was Elizabeth's idea here about comparison information about, about what, the, the idea of what, what would be allowed now, and then what would, what we might do when we try to fill in the table. And I like the idea of filling in the table with different regulations for different zoning districts. I, I have, I think that's a good way to go. And, you know, just, I think that'd be real useful for us to have a meeting when you come back about, this is what might be allowed now, under our current sign ordinance, and then either you could make recommendations, or you could do what we did with Ann Chaney. Ann Chaney would come in with decision memos when we were doing the zoning code revisions, and she'd come, come in with, well, here's the, listing the issues we had, the plan, the, the group, the zoning code revision commission had to decide that night, and it was a good way to get through the, get, to get our work done, a decision memo kind of thing, but, so, you know, here's eight things we got to work on, you know, decide tonight. And that might be helpful, something like that, in, in helping us sort of fill out that table, which I think is important to do. And the last thing I had is I'm wondering about city-sponsored signs. So that would be, you know, like, there's a new sign down by the Pierce Street Park, and that went through Parks and Rec. There are signs that are of a different style that are down at the waterfront. I don't know when those are approved, a long time ago. But I don't know if planning and zoning should or would have any role in city signs. The Albany Community Foundation, which I'm president of, actually, we're replacing the Welcome to Albany sign on Key Route, which, which we donated to the city some, 2001 now, or something like that, and we're replacing it, and so we're paying for it, but the city said, well, we won't, we're going to design it, and we're going to have Mark Van Brockhorst design it, and it'll be, and we, we don't, I had, I, I used the model of the one that was at Pierce Street Park, because it was the most current one, and they, I was told, well, that's not our, that's not our sign model now. And I think it went through Parks and Rec, or the City Council, or whatever, the City Council had to accept it, our donation as a gift, but it's a very different sign. It's very different from what was at Pierce Street Park. And, and I, I don't know, it seems to me like the city should have a, a common language and a common sort of design standards, sort of a logo kind of thing.
Yeah, I think for, for city parks, I know Parks and Rec had also worked on directional signage for the Greenway, that kind of thing, that sort of lets you know where you're heading, and what, what landmarks are within a certain distance, depending on your marker.
Okay, and, and maybe, P and Z may not have any role in that, but it, maybe that should be spelled out, that it's, it's not a P and Z purview, or if they want us to, then we could have a role in that, I don't know. We, we had to review the, you know, the, the city center, the, the Public Works Building, we reviewed that, we reviewed signage, we reviewed that, as a matter of fact, you know, so. So what, anyway, the role of the city-sponsored projects is, is something I think we should address in this process. I liked, I really liked Elizabeth's comment, or maybe it was yours, Ann, but the proportions for the size of the, of the storefront, that, I think that's really, it's important for us to, to make some decisions on, and provide some guidance on. Okay, I think that's all I have.
Well, I guess I don't have a whole lot more to add, but I would agree in general. You know, I guess I think about just the ability of signs to add to the vitality, and kind of visual interest of a district, and, you know, I love neon signs, but, you know, you know, especially at night, the way they're illuminated is really important. So, you know, I don't have any definitive ideas about that at the moment. Obviously, appropriate for each zoning district, different regulations, kind of depending on what kind of a wayfinding is going on, whether it's pedestrian, or auto-oriented, or freeways passing by Cleveland, you know, sort of thing, kind of comes into play. And I like the idea of integrating with the architectural features of whatever building, not obscuring architectural features, I think is a big, is a good idea. I don't particularly like those awning, you know, type signs, but at the same time, I'm not against awnings, per se. I mean, we're not prohibiting awnings, are we? Or, I mean, awnings serve a legitimate function of shade control and rain protection.
I think it would, well, I mean, we, we can kind of craft this as appropriate, but walking down Solano today, the building that Tony Kershaw owns, where Little Star Pizza, Boss Burger, they, they have awnings, but the awnings don't contain signage. However, they still provide some architectural interest, and some protection from the elements, but the signage, it's kind of the same thing, they have blade signs that allow, you know, enhance the pedestrian environment, create visibility from both directions, and still maintain a certain scale.
Yeah, so there's some, some line there, some balance, or some, some point where an awning is fine, but, you know, no signage on it, or, I don't know, I think about free speech issues as well, I mean, it's part of the expression of someone's architecture to, I don't know, it's, it's a tricky thing. So, anyway, I don't really have a whole lot more to add at the moment, but-
With that, if you want to make a motion on the reso of intention?
Oh, yeah, we should. Yeah, I think we should get into this. So I'll move adoption of the Resolution of Intention 2019-07, to amend Chapter 2032 Signs of the Albany Municipal Code.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing no, no opposition, that has passed. So that brings us off of, yeah, no break.
Yeah, to the very end here. So just two announcements, we have canceled the May 8 meeting, so we'll see you on May 22nd. And one, a bit of kind of last-minute information, at 4:30 today, an appeal was filed of 1115 Nielsen, the project that you looked at at the previous meeting, so that will be going to council in June.
Oh, it was appealed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. And it'll go to council in June.
June 17th.
You don't know when yet, huh? Yeah, okay.
Well, with that, meeting is adjourned.
Okay.